Township Board of Supervisors, at this time, I would like to invite up the Arrowlight Cub Scouts, that's Langhorn PAC 19, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand and join us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Again, that was the Arrowlight Cub Scouts from Langhorn PAC 19. Next, singing our national anthem, we have Becca Gutierrez. Becca is a Neshamani High School freshman, and she is also helping the township plant thirty trees this Saturday with her Girl Scout troop. Please join me in welcoming Becca Gutierrez.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you so much, Becca. That was wonderful. Next, we are honored to have two students from Maple Point Middle School. Last week, my colleagues and I were privileged to attend Maple Point Middle School's annual Veterans Day ceremony. And here today, we have two students, Mia DeAngelis, who will give us a reading of "In Flanders' Fields", and we also have Andrew Pirolo, who will play taps on the trumpet. Come on up, guys.
"In Flanders' Fields" by John McCray. In Flanders' fields the poppies blow Between the crosses, row on row, That mark our place and in the sky the larks still bravely singing. Fly scarce heard amid the guns below We are the dead. Short days ago we lived, felt dawn, saw sunset glow Loved and were loved, and now we lie in Flanders' fields. Take up our quarrel with the foe To you from failing hands we throw the torch. Be yours to hold it high If ye break faith with us who die. We shall not sleep Though poppies grow in Flanders' fields.
Thank you so much, Mia and Andrew, and thank you again to Becca and to the Cub Scouts. We appreciate all of you being here tonight. Ms. Corporal, would you please call roll?
Mr. Kezak.
Here.
Ms. Payne?
Here.
Ms. Hannah?
Here.
Ms. Kane?
Here.
We also have Township Manager Ms. Tulley Coles, Assistant Manager Mr. Valla, Township Solicitor Mr. Esposito, and Township Engineer Mr. Kessler in attendance.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. A few announcements. The next Board of Supervisors meeting will be Monday, December 12th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. And we have a few upcoming events. First, there is going to be a tree planting Saturday, November 19th, from 9:30 AM to 11:30 AM. We have our shop with a cop, and that's going to be Saturday, December 10th, from 8:30 AM to 3:00 PM. And that'll be at the Target Oxford Valley. And then finally, we have our holiday open house that we do every year. That's going to be Thursday, December 8th, at 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM. And that'll be right here at the Middletown Municipal Center. So please try to join us for those three events. And now, we will have the swearing-in of new police officer Kaylee Plinsky. To support, obey, and defend...
To support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
And to uphold the laws and ordinances...
And to uphold the laws and ordinances...
Of Middletown Township...
Of Middletown Township...
And to perform all of my duties...
And to perform all of my duties...
As a police officer with Middletown Township...
As a police officer with Middletown Township...
With honor and fidelity.
With honor and fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll take a couple minutes in case anybody wants to get out of here. You're, of course, welcome to stay, but... Good, okay. All right, next on the agenda, we have a couple of special items. The first is a proclamation for Small Business Saturday in Middletown Township, and it reads, "Whereas the Township of Middletown celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions that they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Association, there are currently thirty-two point five million small businesses in the United States. They represent ninety-nine point seven percent of all firms with paid employees in the United States, are responsible for sixty-two percent of net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ forty-six point eight percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas seventy-nine percent of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their community on Small Business Saturday, seventy percent report the day makes them want to encourage others to shop small, independently owned retailers, and sixty-six percent report that the day makes them want to shop small all year long. And whereas fifty-eight percent of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business, and fifty-four percent reported that they dined or ordered takeout from a small restaurant, bar, or café on Small Business Saturday in 2021. And whereas Middletown Township supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors of Middletown Township Bucks County, Pennsylvania, that November 26th, 2022 be designated as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Middletown Township Board of Supervisors proclaim this fourteenth day of November, 2022." We have another proclamation, recognizing Native American Heritage Month in Middletown Township, and that reads, "Whereas every November, Native American Heritage Month is celebrated to honor the remarkable Native Americans who have contributed to the character, culture, and history of the nation. This month also is referred to as American Indian and Alaskan Native Heritage Month. Native American Heritage Month honors and celebrates the perseverance, rich diversity, and excellence of all Native Americans. And whereas Native American Heritage Month is timed to rejoice in diverse and rich cultures, histories, and traditions, and to appreciate the great contributions of Native Americans, this month allows us to spread awareness about tribes and educate people about the various challenges faced by the Native Americans in the past and today. And whereas National Native American Month began as an effort to have a day of appreciation and acknowledgement for the unique contributions made by the first Americans for the growth and establishment of the United States, and is now the effort has resulted in a whole month being celebrated for that purpose. And whereas in 1915, a plan concerning American Indian Day was formally approved in the annual Congress of the American Indian Association meeting, and was declared May 1916. In 1990, a joint resolution was approved by George H.W. Bush, which called for November to be named National American Heritage Month. Declarations like these have been issued since 1994, such as Native American Heritage Month and National American Indian and Alaska Native Heritage Month. And whereas Middletown Township encouraged everyone to learn more about the people who first called this nation home in the spirit of growth, healing, and hope for a better future. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Middletown Township that November be proclaimed as Native American Heritage Month. Middletown Township Board of Supervisors proclaim this day, the fourteenth of November, 2022." And that takes us to public comment. This is public comment on non-agenda items. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda items, and there's a lot of them. Consideration of authorizing payment of November 14th, 2022 bills list in the amount of $1,785,920.95. Consideration of approving the October 3rd, 2022 minutes of the public meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors and the budget work session minutes for October 17th and 24th, 2022. Consideration of financial security release number two, final release for Karen University Land Development in the amount of $176,823.60. 2022 road program payments. Item one, consideration of approving payment certificate number two for the 2022 road payment to James D. Morrissey, Inc. in the amount of $456,820.24. Item two, consideration of approving payment certificate number two for the 2022 road program to James D. Morrissey, Inc. in the amount of $716,370.29. And item three, consideration of approving change order number one for the 2022 road program in the amount of $3,307.90. Next item is grant resolutions. Consideration of approving resolution number 22-29R, authorizing application to Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Multi-Molder Transportation Fund Grant Program. Item two, consideration of approving resolution number 22-30R, authorizing application to Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development COVID-19 ARPAPA Small Water and Sewer Program. And item three, consideration of approving resolution number 22-31R, authorizing application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development COVID-19 ARPA H2OPA Water Supply Sanitary Sewer and Stormwater Projects Program. Next, consideration of approving resolution numbers 22-32R, authorizing 2240 Durham Road Subdivision Sewer Facilities Planning Module, and consideration of authorizing a cooperation agreement with the Redevelopment Authority of Bucks County and Wood Services, Inc. in support of a $1 million redevelopment assistance capital program for the Wood Services Education and Training Project. Is there a second on the consent agenda items? Rather, is there a motion on the consent agenda items? Sorry.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Any questions from the public?
Mr. Kiecek, I just had a correction, if I may, on the change order number one for the road program. The value is listed incorrectly on there. The change order for that is an amount of $35,567.70. And that's for the additional work that was coordinated with Public Works at Twin Oaks Park.
Yeah, with that change, could I have a new motion to approve the consent agenda items with the amendment to consideration of approving change order number one for the 2022 road program? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve all consent items with the amendment.
Thanks, Ms. Corporal. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries five zero. Next on the agenda, consideration of lot line change waiver request for 727 Linden Avenue. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Ryan Gallagher. I am the attorney for Mr. Keyshawn here, who is the owner. And I'm sure by now you've seen the planning commission's recommendation and the approvals that we got from the zoning hearing board. This is a simple lot line change. I'll make it brief. Essentially, Mr. Keyshawn came to me, wanted to sell his home, which he'd gotten from his, through the family years earlier. And apparently, one of the, there's three lots. One of them ran through his bedroom, so that was going to make it difficult to sell. So what we wanted to do was clean the three lots up, consolidate them down into two of equal size and uniformity. So that is the gist of it. If you have any questions, I am happy to oblige. I also have Brian Studer here, engineer, who could answer any more technical questions. And of course, the owner is here as well, should you have any questions of him.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Do any board members have questions for Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Studer, or the applicant? And if not, I can accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to grant approval for 727 Linden Avenue Lot Line Change Plan, SLD number 22-08, with the following conditions. One, applicant should comply in full with all requirements in the Middletown Township subdivision and land development ordinance and the Middletown Township zoning ordinance, unless relief was granted by the body having jurisdiction. Number two, all comments still outstanding in review letter shall be fully addressed for plans to be considered final.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions at this time? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Sorry.
Old habit, Mr. Gallagher?
It is an old habit. I did serve six years in Newtown, so...
Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Next on the agenda, consideration of Middletown Country Club Golf Cart Path Project. Mr. Kessler.
Thank you, Mr. Kiecek. The Middletown Country Club Pathway Improvement Project was publicly bid, consisted of repaving, reconstructing, and the extension of some of the cart pathways throughout the course. The bids were open on November 7th, and we reviewed them per the items in the bid package, as well as the township's RCO. Unfortunately, the two bidders we did receive were determined not to be qualified. Neither met our RCO requirements, and also, the low bidder of the two had a base bid amount quite a bit higher than our anticipated and expected cost for this kind of work. So with that, we recommend that we reject the two bids that we received, and we'll work with township staff and the country club to try to determine the best path forward for them to get this work done going into the future in some manner.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Are there any questions for Mr. Kessler, for many board members?
What did we have allotted for the base bid for this project?
Our estimate was more in the range of $175,000.
Okay.
The low bid came in at just about $225,000.
Yeah. And what were the requirements that they did not meet for RCO?
Neither had qualified in regards to the apprenticeship requirements that we have in there.
Any other questions for Mr. Kessler? If not, I can accept a motion.
I make a motion to reject all bids opening on November 7th, 2022 for the Middletown Country Club Pathway Improvement Project due to no qualified bids received and sufficient funds not available.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions or comments at this time? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Carries five zero. Next on the agenda, consideration of accepting the resignation of Sally Miller from the Citizens Traffic Commission. Is there a motion?
I move to accept the resignation.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Carries five zero. Thank you, Ms. Miller, for your service to your community on the Citizens Traffic Commission. Next on the agenda, consideration of accepting the resignation of Charles Alfonso from the Human Relations Commission. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Charles Alfonso from the Human Relations Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Alfonso, for your service on the Township Human Relations Commission. Next on the agenda, consideration of settlement of zoning appeal of Richard Coleman from March 23rd, 2022 decision of the Middletown Township Zoning Hearing Board. Mr. Esposito.
Thank you, Ms. Kezak. Earlier this year, Richard Coleman applied for four variances with the zoning hearing board related to building a single-family residence on an existing undersized lot along Ralph Avenue. Two of those variances related to existing non-conformities of the size and width of the lot. The other two variances were for impervious surface coverage and building coverage related to the size of the house that he wanted to build compared to the size of the lot. The zoning hearing board denied the application, and the applicant appealed it to the Court of Common Pleas. We were asked to join in to try and help resolve and come to a settlement of this. And what happened was the applicant actually decided to revise their plans and build a, reduce the size of the house that they wanted to build. So now, two of the variances are no longer needed. The other two variances that he was requesting still are with the lot size and width, which is technically existing non-conformities, and probably no relief is actually even required. However, they're asking us to just confirm that they're, to give the variances to confirm the existing non-conformity. I've spoken with the Director of Zoning, as well as the Zoning Hearing Board Solicitor, and we're all in agreement that we would recommend settling this matter with these stipulations.
Thank you. Are there any questions from any board members for Mr. Esposito? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to authorize the settlement of the appeal filed by Richard Coleman of Bucks County, docket number 2022-01794, through the Middletown Township Zoning Hearing Board's approval of the plans prepared by Kelly and Close Engineers on September 28th, 2022 for a two-story, single-family residence of 1,170 square feet and granting of the variances to Section 500-903.A, allowing a lot area of 6,250 square feet when a minimum of 10,000 square feet is required, and Section 500-903.B, allowing a lot width of 50 feet when a minimum of 80 feet is required. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Esposito. And that brings us to our 2023 budget presentation. Ms. Tulley Coles.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It is my honor to present the 2023 proposed budget this evening, recognizing that I am the only thing between you, the audience, and the public, between you all and the Eagles game. I will try to fly through this. And I want to make sure that I start off by letting the public know that tonight kicks off the public input portion, official public input portion. We've had the public involved throughout the process, but tonight, the board will have the opportunity to authorize advertisement. We will have the time period between this meeting and December 12th for public input, and the board will then vote. So again, I'm honored to present you a budget tonight, which, as presented... So again, I'm honored to present you a budget tonight, which, as presented, has no tax increase for goodness, quite a few years in a row, no real estate tax increase. So our finances have been significantly impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Most importantly, I would say, in 2020, we had the impact of significant revenue losses, and then we followed up in 2021 and 2022 with an influx of revenue from the federal government, from the American Rescue Plan Act. So we had 4.7 million come in to the township funds, which did help to make up for the losses in 2022. We'll talk a little bit more about that. But the other significant thing to note about 2022 was we had a very strong rebound in revenue sources, a couple of them being the earned income tax. Folks are making higher wages, and that's translating into more earned income tax revenue. Our real estate transfer tax revenue continues to be strong, and we also experienced a rebound in revenues based on the development activity that's occurring in the community, most notably the Oxford Valley Mall apartments. So overall, the 2022 budget is balanced. It includes 38.8 million in expenditures for operating costs and a little bit more than 9 million in capital costs. This slide shows you how it is spread over the township's funds. Maintaining the general fund balance has been a critical priority in recent years, especially as our forecasts show that our contractual obligations are beginning to outpace our revenues. Notably, you can see on this chart that our cost for salaries, benefits, and pension for township personnel is basically locked in at 88% of our general fund right now. And so if we are to continue to provide services at the level that we are, we have, you know, 88% of the general fund is in those categories. Across all of our funds, we are beginning 2023 with more than 59 million in fund balance, 40 of that being in the investment fund, 11 million, 11.9 in the general fund. Notation asterisk, 4.7 of that is the ARPA funding, which you will be allocating this year. This chart, I'm not sure how clear it is for you, but this chart illustrates how the cash reserve in the general fund has grown over the years. Primarily, you can see the implementation of the earned income tax in 2014, and over the years, we've been able to build up the fund balance in the general fund. You can see 2020, the significant drop in fund balance, 2020 and 2021. Again, that's due to revenue loss for the pandemic. Another significant factor here is the increase, significant increase due to ARPA, and then the conversions of the revenues and the expenditures in 2023, which is what we talk about every year at Budget Time, is really just keeping a close watch on our revenues and expenditures in the general fund. A bunch of things go into putting together the budget. Some highlights for the board and for the public. We have a long history of aggressively seeking grant revenue. Note the consent agenda tonight. There were a bunch of grants that we were applying for. We have received nearly $10 million since 2011 in grant revenue. Also, we participate in two separate municipal insurance pools, the Delaware Valley Health Trust and the Delaware Valley Workers' Comp Trust. Participating in municipal insurance pooling has allowed us to stabilize our insurance costs. Our health trust renewal this year is 4.57%, which is a fraction of what we typically see or what we saw in the commercial market. Our workers' compensation, our claims have been up, our rates did go up, but we were able to utilize rate stabilization funds to offset that increase. And property and liability is out to market right now. We'll know that hopefully in a couple of weeks, definitely before you adopt the final budget. Infrastructure and equipment, in 2022, we were in the ninth year of our 15-year road improvement program. We've paved more than 74 miles in that nine years. In 2023, we propose to continue with that with $1 million. Our capital improvement plan details our priorities for capital. The capital budget reflects these priorities. And again, our vehicle costs and equipment costs are often covered by the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority. A couple of feathers in our cap. GFOA has, in 2022, for the fourth year in a row, we received the Distinguished Budget Award, the Financial Reporting Award. We received our 18th award for that. You all know that we got a AAA bond rating in 2020 and 2021. Recently, Moody's affirmed that bond rating, and we are listed as stable, which basically reflects a sound financial position and the expectations that it will remain that way in the near term. We also, the board adopted a fund balance policy two years ago, which is another critical component of our financial policies. Our pension, so 2.9 million will go into the police pension in 2023, 463,000 in the non-uniformed pension. You can see the history on that chart of our minimum municipal obligation for pension. We currently have 117 full-time employees. Our employees are represented by four separate collective bargaining units, and all four collective bargaining agreements call for 3.5% wage increases in 2023. This budget contemplates filling vacant positions, and there is one additional employee in the Department of Fire and Emergency Services. Speaking of the Department of Fire and Emergency Services, we are served by four volunteer fire companies. We have dedicated volunteers from those four volunteer fire companies who provide fire suppression services to us during the evening hours and on the weekends. The firefighters in our Department of Fire and Emergency Services provide daytime response. In 2022, the township, in cooperation with the fire companies, worked on implementing a strategic plan that will hopefully continue to take us down the path, moving toward being a true combination department. Maintaining the viability of our four fire companies is going to be critical in avoiding the potential cost of a fully paid department. And so this gets its own slide because of the importance of this issue and this area of service in Middletown Township. The board did agree this year to participate in the workers' compensation insurance costs for all four fire companies, so there is an $80,000 expenditure programmed for that. And I just added a final bullet, that we are in the midst of recruiting for our chief for the department, and we hope that we'll have somebody in place in the first quarter of 2023. Moving to just general fund highlights, balanced budget, 25 million in revenues, 25 million in expenditures. Looking at the revenues, we have a varied menu of taxes, if you will, which creates for healthy revenues. The EIT is our largest piece of pie at 36%, real estate tax at 15%, public safety 11%. That's primarily permit revenue, and you can see the other categories of revenues. Our real estate tax millage in 2023 is proposed to remain at 17.57 mils, and you can see on this list are the various tax funds where that 17.57 is distributed. There is one slight change. There's no change to the bottom line, but we had a slight shift of millage from the debt service fund to the hydrant fund, and that is primarily to cover the increased costs for fire hydrant services. Looking at real estate tax, the average property owner in Middletown Township pays $517 in real estate tax. Let that sink in for a moment, because most people think real estate taxes, and they think of the giant real estate bill that they pay. And if you look middle, for real estate taxes paid by our residents, Middletown Township's portion is only 8% of the total tax bill. 12% goes to Bucks County, and 80% goes to Neshamani School District. Other revenues, Act 511 taxes make up our other taxes. Amusement taxes, 5%, the EIT, one half of 1%, local services tax, mercantile for business, wholesale, retail, parking transaction fee per capita, and real estate transfer. Have a couple of slides to show you the trends, and there, you know, is, I'm sort of, you know, repeating myself with what happened in 2020. You can see how that, the COVID-19 pandemic dramatically impacted amusement tax. The good news is we are, as we talked about in the budget workshops, we're really trending back to pre-COVID, right? So we're looking at 2019. If you look at that, you can sort of, you could take the line from 2019 over to 2022 on that graph. EIT is, again, tracking very well. 2022, we had a strong year of revenue collections, and we expect that that is going to remain stable in 2023. Our mercantile tax, the two dips on this, because this is a, actually, from the beginning of time, going back to 2003, so this is a 20-year, and you can see the recession in the '08-'09 time period was the one dip, and then the 2020 dip for COVID-19. Again, we have had a strong rebound. I added a slide this year. I think it's interesting, we learned during the pandemic, when we were really getting under revenue sources, where does the mercantile tax come from? And as you can see, the automotive industry and our car dealers really are large contributors, followed by grocery, large retail, small retail. Real estate transfer tax, wow, 2021 was a big year for us. Even though we came down a bit in 2022, it's still much higher than usual. We have a lot of big things going on in the community, a lot of big transfers happened in 2021. The interest rates were very good in 2021. We do expect a drop-off in the residential transfers because of the current interest rate environment, but we do, you know, we still expect strong revenues because we have a lot of big projects that we are anticipating. Moving to expenditures, this shows you the expenditure pie, very typical in any municipal government to have half of the expenditure pie covered by the police department. I think one thing that I would draw your attention to is employer-paid benefits, being the second-largest piece of pie, 17%, so, you know, you know, almost double some of our actual departmental budgets. Just other fund highlights, very high level, I'm going to hit these. Our fire protection fund and our ambulance funds, historically, these are funds where the revenue comes in from real estate taxes, and we transfer it out. For the fire protection fund, beginning this year, we are going to be holding the portion of the tax allocation that is designated for apparatus, and that's part of our strategic plan that we're working with the fire companies. And we will continue our volunteer firefighter incentive program for 30,000, and as I mentioned, workers' compensation. Parks and Recreation, again, this, the revenue in this fund comes from tax revenue as well as user fees and charges for service. The 2023 budget's 1.6 million. The sanitation fund, we are in year four of a five-year contract. Our residents pay 401 annually. The way that we do that is we figure out the total cost over five years. Residents have been paying the same amount over the timeframe, and they will, again, in year five, pay $401. Our capital fund, we have more than 9 million in capital projects. We've talked extensively at the workshops, at our meeting at the end of August. I encourage anyone who has any interest to take a look at our capital plan, which very clearly details all of our proposed projects. The investment fund, beginning balance, 40 million. Again, that fund is restricted. Highway aid, restricted expenditures here as well, 1.9 million for road-related expenditures. The budget process, this year, we did something new. We did a special capital meeting in August. September, we began the real deep dive into the budget, two budget workshops. Tonight, you'll have the authorization to advertise. December 12th is your first chance to approve. My concluding comments, I, you know, we have a great team here in the township. We have a, an amazing group of employees. Putting this budget together involves everyone from the bottom to the top, from the top to the bottom. A special thanks to the department directors, to our finance director, Megga Bandari, to our assistant manager, Nick Vallah. This document has already been posted, so anyone who's out there can go and take a look at it. Both Nick and I are available, Megga. We're all available to answer any questions from the public. And finally, just thank you, thanks to the board. It's been a great budget process. We really had a great level of participation. I say it in my budget message, this is really the single most important policy document that you all do every year, and I think it is a good spending plan for the community for the year ahead. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Teoli-Cools. There's no question that putting together a municipal budget is a, it's a collaborative effort, and it's a lot of work. And so I want to thank you for all of your hard work and effort. I want to thank Mr. Vallah for all his hard work. I want to thank Ms. Bandari for everything she did, our Director of Finance, and all of the department heads, my colleagues on the Board of Supervisors, and the members of the public who participated in the budget process, because that's really important and critical. This, this is a, the process is really incredible, not only to be a part of, but to watch, to see what it takes and what goes into creating a municipal budget. I'm pleased that, for as long as I've been on this board, we've been able to present a balanced budget without a tax increase, and we are presenting a budget that once again is balanced and includes no tax increase for the residents of this township. I would encourage the residents of this township to review the document and to provide feedback. That's what this process is about. And so at this point, I'd let any of my colleagues who have questions or comments for Ms. Teoli-Cools or anybody else. And if not, I can accept a motion.
And your motion is just to authorize advertisement? I don't have anything in front of you.
I'll make a motion to authorize advertisement of the 2023 annual budget.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions or comments?
No, I just wanted to reiterate how much effort went into this and how much work, you know, the team did, all of you guys. I won't list you all out again, but really, really great work. You know, we have, you know, a lot of eyes on this, and really great work putting together, putting the summaries together and informing this board of everything that we need to know.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Carries five zero. Carries five zero. And that brings us to other business. Mr. Vallah. Mr. Kessler.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Mr. Esposito.
Nothing.
Ms. Teoli-Cools.
Nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Hannah.
Just thank you to everybody who attended, and great job to Rebecca, Mia, and Andrew. They did a wonderful job, as well as the Light Club Scouts. Awesome job.
Ms. Kane.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, thank you, all, everyone, the Cub Scouts and our presenters tonight and our singer. It's really great having, you know, people come out and partake in our meetings.
Thank you. Ms. Corporal.
I just wanted to congratulate our new officer, Polinsky, and welcome her to Middletown Township. I wanted to thank the Boy Scouts for doing the pledges tonight, and our Becca, who did the National Anthem, and our readers, Mia DeAngelos and Andrew for playing the taps. It was really very nice to see such participation from our younger people in our community, and I'm really happy to have that, and hopefully we'll see more of that. And I, last thing, I just wanted to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Ms. Payne.
I just wanted to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving and say, "Go Eagle!"
Thank you, Ms. Payne. I can't top that, so I have nothing further. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
We are adjourned.